Okay, we're going to start with a session. And this is one of the GLOe Hero special sessions. And the setup of this session is slightly different than the regular sessions. So we have a presentation followed by a discussant comments and the discussion has already read the working paper in depth. And then we will open the floor for general Q and A. And we have three presenters in this session. It will be Kelsey O'Connor starting. I will present second and finally Casper Kaiser will present this paper. So Kelsey, the floor is yours.
Thanks, everyone for coming. I am very much pleased to be here. Is call is one of my absolute favorite groups and events. This is unfortunately for everyone here, this is the least prepared I've been. These are hot off the press. Figures that I just put together in the last week. So I bear with me. I hope you find it interesting and we'll get started and see if the clicker is working. It is okay. So first of all, immigration concerns in Europe. Oh, and I want to say this is going to be part of a book. So it's a little bit of a summary of some of the things that have happened since nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety in Europe and how that may have influenced life satisfaction. So it's part of a broader picture. And this is just going to be a chapter focused on immigration. And we start off here with a two thousand seventeen look at the concerns Europeans were thinking about. So specifically your barometer survey responses to the question, what do you think are the two most important issues facing the EU at the moment? And you see terrorism and immigration listed up there. It basically double all of the other issues. So clearly, and this is among natives because it's the group we were focused on at the time. And so it's clearly something that people are thinking about. But you know, how important is it really is what we're going to delve into a little bit with this this paper? And I want to start off with an example here. So a few years ago, I was in Luxembourg at a conference where an impassioned woman from Lithuania basically came and yelled at us. Because we were stealing all of the people from her country. So you can think of this in a broader concept of brain drain. And so it made me think a little bit, right? She's got a point. But we should analyze it too. Let's see what's what's really going on here. So that's Lithuania on the left and Luxembourg on the right, the flags. And so if you look here, I'm not sure. Yeah, I guess you can see that. That's great. So this is the population change from based on the nineteen ninety base to two thousand nineteen. And you see Lithuania there is is third Latvia. Here Bosnia and Herzegovina, I'm trying to keep in the the microphone. They did have a significant decline. You know, it was really surprising to me. I can't imagine a twenty five percent population decline of the country as a whole. Right? And then if you look to the west, the far right here, you have Northern Europe as well as Western Europe. So you do have. You know, maybe some justification for this woman's concerns. And also, this is the population change. If you correlate that with net immigration, it is correlated at about eighty one percent. So a big part of this is coming from immigration, but of course, not all of it. So she's right to be to be concerned, to be thinking about this. All right, moving forward. There we go. Yeah. All right. So let's look at some of the numbers here. So you have. I would say thirty seven countries overall in our sample. And if you look at the total population here in this column, you see there's an increase of about twenty two million. But there's a big change across different regions here. So there was an increase also just in the the number of foreign born. So this is people moving from one place to another, right? So the number of foreign born increased by, you know, nearly thirty two million. Whereas the total population increased by about twenty three million. So you know, immigration was a was a big part of what's going on. And you see that the foreign born increased the most in the Western Europe. Actually, it makes more sense if we need to do it this way. You know, so you have much, much larger increase in the number of foreign born in Western Europe than in the other groups of countries. See here, and the number immigrants, right? So these are people moving from, in this case, this is the former Soviet. The Eastern Europe that's not a part of the former Soviet Union, they lost about ten million people. So you really do have a big movement from the east to the west as illustrated here. And net migration overall, right? So accounting for both people moving in and out, you see very big population outflows overall from this group of countries. So bringing in now, you can think about some of the causes for this. Part of it is the expansion of the EU, right? It made it possible to move between countries. And I highlighting here just the number of countries I have in the in total there. And you see again on the net migration towards the far right. So you have a very large increase in the the number of people in the former EU countries. So those are the. They were EU in the nineteen ninety period. And then those who joined the EU over this period of time, they lost the largest number. And so they likely moved to the West, right? So I think this is stuff that you're familiar with. But you know, here we have the data to show you exactly what happened in numbers. So let's think about some of the causes, right? So you notice I jumped straight into data, jumped straight into a story, skipped over the literature because Martin's going to give us the literature shortly. And this really is, I think, one of the better sources of information out there, the Martin Burger, Martin Hendricks. And note the the four subtopics here. So you have the role of happiness in decision making. The happiness of migrants, the happiness of those left behind, the happiness of hosting population. So I do strongly recommend this, and we're going to see this in a moment. So I'm not going to cover the literature in any more depth than just to reference you to this. And I think that those of you who are familiar with this field know that there are both push factors and pull factors influencing people's decisions. And here's a question from the Gallup World Poll. And so these are going to be, it's illustrative of a push factor. So there are characteristics in your country that is causing you to want to move. And so here's the the question, ideally, if you had the opportunity, would you like to permanently move to another country? Or would you prefer to continue living this country? So it's nice. We have micro data on people's intentions or desire to move. And you'll see here, basically just my same set of countries. You have the desire to move in this kind of third column here and the best possible life in the far right. Best possible life is the cantaloupe ladder. You know, similar, I think most of you here are familiar with it, quite similar to life satisfaction. And the correlation here is a negative fifty seven percent. So countries that are happier, you have fewer people wanting to move. So most of the data on this has been looked at at a micro level. So this is, you know, pulling it up at the aggregate level. So not nothing surprising here, just re illustrating some of the information that we had before. You know, happiness seems to be a determinant factor, or it's a reflective, let's say, of push factors causing people to want to move. So pull factors, I think that, you know, some of you are quite familiar, right? So people move very frequently for economic reasons. So you think about the wage gap. There's also commonalities between countries such as common language, common ethnic background. Similar characteristics like that. But there's also something that's relatively new. So part of what I'm doing is just introducing to a couple of new pieces of data. There's this migrant integration policy index. And so the higher you score on this index represents equal treatment between immigrants and native born people. So this is a little bit of a new index. And you can see basically my scores here on the far right again by regions. I have all of this, of course, by individual country, but I'm doing it for brevity, just summarizing it. And then the net migration into those countries. So you'll see, you know, Eastern Europe, Eastern Europe, other than the former Soviet Union, they have the the lower. My PEC scores, the former EU or the previously EU, they had the highest, you know, scores here. And you know, the correlation again is is positive. So people do move to countries that have, you know, more that have better policies for for migrants. So this is just representing another poll factor influencing people's decisions. So then what I wanted to do then, of course, is test this a little bit more rigorously. But really, it's still descriptive. This, you know, I do some basic econometrics to improve upon the relationship, but there's nothing causal here. So I'm going to look at the following specification. So this is the inverse hyperbolic spine sign, excuse me, of the immigration. Numbers in a, this is bilateral. So these are the numbers of migrants in the destination. D, origin country, O, at time, T. You can see that written there, and that's going to be a function of the previous number in that country from that origin. Also, the subjective being in the destination country in the previous period. The subjective being in the origin country in the previous period, as well as characteristics at both the origin and the destination. Those are I see vectors, then also some gravity characteristics. Let me just tell you a little bit about the data. And and also fixed effects for the country of origin, country destination and time fixed effects. So basically bilateral stocks, right? So I know, right, if you're residing in the UK or in this case, this is the thing of Luxembourg was referring to before. If the number of people in Luxembourg that came from Lithuania, or the number of people in the UK that came from Poland, or the number of people in Poland that came from the UK. So it's bilateral, right? And I want to see if that's a function of the happiness in those underlying destination and origin countries. And I have UN population statistics, and then I had to do some interpolation to to match up all of the data. And I do this from nineteen ninety over the period into two thousand nineteen. So I think this is a small contribution. Is I'm using a longer period of time to to analyze these data. And I do it for both the Gallup World Poll. So that's more recent. That's two thousand five to two thousand nineteen. And the European values study, World Value Survey nineteen ninety, two thousand nineteen. And yeah, as I mentioned here, subjective being is defined at the country of destination or origin in time T using either life satisfaction or the cantaloupe ladder, which is, you know, quite similar. And that's, yeah, and we'll move forward. Any questions with this? Is this making sense? Because it's it's important. I think you'll see the table in a moment, but okay. Yeah, so it's it's true. So it's the it's the number of immigrants residing in a country, right? And I know where they came from. I know which country which country they're residing in. So it's after they've emigrated. So so those who are immigrants in another country were people who emigrated from an origin country. And so I know where they came from, and I know where they're residing. Yeah. And then so I'm what I just predicting that with the subject will being as a push and a pull factor on both sides. Pushing forward. There we go. Yeah. And then I just vectors that controls. Okay, so let's let's take a look at this. So we have, you know, first off, just the lag, right, of the bilateral stock, right? So you know, the more immigrants in a particular country from another country that's going to pull more. But then you have destination, life satisfaction, origin, life satisfaction. So the they've been lagged. And so this shows just a basic regression that people are moving to countries that are happier, right? This is not surprising, but then also people are moving away from countries that are less satisfied. Or you see that with those first two sets of coefficients. And then what I'm going to do is just, you know, add some controls. I have period dummies in here, gravity controls. There's, you see thirty seven origins, thirty six destinations. So I have, you know, a large number of dyads. And bringing in the kind of the additional controls here, you can see just across the bottom, origin effects. Those are just, you know, basically dummies. Destination effects in columns two and three. And you see, actually, you start to lose some of the relationships when you put this all together. So the lagged, you know, origin, life satisfaction is no longer statistically significant. The destination is no longer statistically significant, but neither are in that last column, column. It's listed as column eight, but because I'm just being brief, there's more in the what will be the paper. You see that the traditional economic variables are also not pulling this in. So the destination life satisfaction is partially reflecting the economic conditions in the destination. So when you pull them all in together, they're they're knocking each other out. So it could be that life satisfaction is predictive of where you want to move, but that is partially due to the economic conditions in those countries. Let's see, I also have similar types of results for Gallup. I'm not sure how much time I have. Two minutes. Okay, yeah, we're skipping. So. All right. So now I also want to look at the aggregate impact on those left behind. So I focused a little bit more on immigration coming generally. So this Lithuania hypothesis is that subjective being is negatively affected by large declines in population. And outmigration produces those population declines. So what I'm going to do is kind of skip ahead, leave out the the specification here just for sake of time. And we'll just go straight to the the figure here. So this first column now is showing that you have, and I have kind of two different specifications across the top of fixed effect analysis and an auto regressive analysis. And what I've done is I've allowed the the relationships to be asymmetric. So if you have an increase in the number of people moving out, so this is the number of, all right. So if we're looking at it from the point of view of Lithuania, the number of Lithuanians moving in other countries, right? So that's got a positive relationship here, point one four. So the more people from my country that move to others, the happier my country is. And then the opposite is in the other case here, that this is a decrease. But this is actually, it's a negative coefficient on a variable that only takes negative values. So it's also positive. So I I'm going to recode this in the future to make it a little easy to easier to interpret. So people moving back, the more people that move home also make me happier. So it's 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 an asymmetric relationship. However, I throw in remittances in the second column. So the more people that move away from my country no longer has a relationship once you account for remittances. So it seems that people moving away increases the number of remittances in my home country and but then it fully accounts for the relationship. For the sake of time, I'm going to keep moving. But I want to note just here for full clarity that the relationships show up here in the fixed effect analysis. But as soon as I do an auto regressive analysis where I include lag life satisfaction, the relationships change. And part of that, I think, is because life satisfaction itself, right, is one of those variables that is a push and pull factor. So it's, you know, there's there's a mediation here. So let's, but we'll skip that and just mention here that. So there's actually no evidence to support that outmigration is bad for a country's aggregate life satisfaction. So it's contradicting this this woman's view upfront. And if anything, the association is positive, and that seems to be due to remittances. And this is broadly consistent with some findings that have been summarized by Martin Hendricks and Martin Burger, which you'll see momentarily. And I'll skip, they'll come to that too. So let's get that. Return migration actually seems to be positive related to life satisfaction as well. So there is this 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 difference here. So one of the things I was talking to Anthony about this in the past, we should probably allow for relationships to be more asymmetric in the future. Because it's often the case that they don't work symmetrically. So and then you're going to see this, I think, as well. But this is, I think, really powerful. So this is Martin's work that this first three figures, three bars here. Life evaluation increases for migrants and it they don't adapt actually as well. So it's by half a point. So this is a really large impact. So migration is really good for the immigrants. And yeah, so bringing that together, also my own previous work. Immigration doesn't have a statistically significant impact on the natives of the origin country either. So I haven't replicated this yet. And it also holds regardless of where the immigrants are coming from, from the EU or from outside the EU. And also the certain underlying population groups. So if you look at heterogeneous relationships by education or age, it doesn't matter. So there's no impact. And you can kind of see this with the scatter chart here, the change in the immigration share across the bottom. And the change in life satisfaction on the left, you see there's there's clearly no pattern in that relationship. So it looks like kind of bringing it all together. Immigration is probably only a positive impact in general. So summarizing from nineteen ninety onward, there were very large shifts in the population across Europe due to migration. And indeed, the migration changes were much larger than the population shifts just in general. And people generally move from east to west, especially from the new EU member states to older member states. And you know, a lot of times the discussion is focused on the native countries or the, let's say, the host countries and the migrants. But we should also be thinking about, we should at least be talking about and thinking about those immigrants and countries like Lithuania who are losing a lot of people. But it doesn't seem to be to have a big impact. So we should be thinking about it. Don't ignore them. We should be assessing this. This is preliminary work. But at least so far, it looks like it's it's not important. So the aggregate impacts and life satisfaction were likely to be positive, or at least at the at the worst, insubstantial. So I would say, you know, migration seems to be only a good thing. Positive for migrants, insignificant for the natives, and insubstantial or positive for those who are left behind due to remittances. Thank you.
Oh, yes, this works. Thank you, Kelsey. This, I think, overall, this is a hugely important topic. My my discussion slides will be sort of also getting into this the stuff from from Martin Hendricks and Böhrer, just because you you told me I should really read their chapter. So I did and have some thoughts on it. So so essentially, I have three sort of sets of questions to you or that can be discussed. So the first one, I just a bunch of of general questions about European integration, insofar as this is a chapter about this in particular, rather than about migration in general. And so the first thing, and this is just topical, that has very little to do with migration. But I thought it was very ironic in some sense when you showed the the list of concerns, which I think was in two thousand eighteen, where energy supply was very low on the list. And now, of course, it's, you know, at the very top of the list. So I think it's just worth wondering to try and predict what will happen in the next ten years as to what will then top the list. But that's just an aside. The first more sort of substantive point on on the paper. And I'm just wondering, is is nineteen ninety really a fair comparison point when thinking about European integration? Just in so far as, you know, most of these countries that you're that you're talking about, where you see these last large shifts in in migration streams have really joined the EU in two thousand and four. So I would be really quite So I would be really quite interested to see how in that time span migrant flows have been going. And then a third point is, and I thought this was sort of surprising, that there was absolutely no talk about Brexit, both in your presentation and in your slides, insofar as this seems sort of the archetypical case of migration having consequences and likely consequences in terms of well being, where a country decides to leave the EU. So the most contrary thing to European integration largely as a consequence of migration. And that doesn't seem to be discussed. I'm sort of maybe surprised or just wondering why you made that choice. Now, on the empirical work, I have not very much useful things to say, but maybe just a question or thought. And that is, suppose you pitted all the standard variables that sort of exist in the literature. You put them in one bucket, you predict migration flows, and then you put the subjective well being variables in the equation and just check sort of as a horse race, which of the two predicts better? And so as a follow up question there, I just, you sort of skipped over it, what was in the set of controls. But it seems kind of important to figure out how important in relative terms, subjective well being really is in that sort of set of problems. And then just as a piece of, I guess, framing, it would have been nice to distinguish between the EU type migration flows and the more global migration flows in so far as it is a paper on European integration. Okay, final set. And that's just more of a general question, maybe also to Martin and Martin. And that is, what I would really be interested in at the very end of a chapter like this is to just know what's the total welfare impact of migration? You sort of sign it at the very end, but it seems to me that it would be useful to have a final number, right? For each migrant, the total effect of migration in terms of welfare is, I don't know, point zero three on a life satisfaction scale. I know it's hard to estimate, but that's ultimately the quantity we're interested in. And then just, just a question about the literature in general. Why is nobody using migration reforms? And especially with the dataset that you have, you could be using variation from migration reforms to get sort of at a more exogenous variation. But that's really all the thoughts, as helpful as they may be or not, that I have. So, yeah, thank you, Kelsey.
Test, yes. Okay, we have time for two questions. So maybe Kelsey can come up again.
Thanks, Kelsey. In a similar gravity model with very similar variables, we've done not just country fixed effects and time. And we interact the two fixed, the origin and destination fixed effect. So you have a origin by destination fixed effect, which accounts for different rules between pairs of countries, et cetera. So you may want to try that. The second thing is, coming from my old time series background, you've got a non stationary variable on you that you're regressing. And then you're regressing it on its, on the lag dependent, essentially, aren't you? So you've got the stock of migrants and T on the stock of migrants and T minus one. But it's a non stationary variable. So, and you've got fixed effects and in there, which are probably going to make problems for airline bond type issues. So I think you might, I wasn't sure why you used that specification rather than just looking at the flow of migrants.
Yeah, good questions, thanks. So in other regressions, I did look at dyad fixed effects and I just ran out of time to put it all together. Short answer. And to look at flows, I think you're right. So I've moved away from my time series in conometrics and I need to move back. This is a short answer. And it's also, it wasn't clear to me what the best specification was in its early work. So what I'll do is I'll go back to that is, yeah, would be my short answer. Yeah, I would change, I could change everything into flows. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
So I have two comments. So if people are still concerned about migration, but when you look at the changes in life satisfaction in the destination country, you found that the number of immigrants is not affecting the average life satisfaction in the destination country. How do you reconcile those two things? That's first thing. And then, second thing is, as Casper mentioned, you're just looking at the within European nations migrations. But when people are concerned about migration, probably they are talking about people coming from Africa or Asia. But people look differently from the average Europeans. So then probably you're not actually missing out a lot of things. And the third thing is, okay, if I just extend your findings, then if you just move everybody from origin country to destination country, then the life satisfaction will go up overall. But in the end, that's not how it's going to work out. So probably there is going to be some breaking point at above certain level. Let's say, if they did, let's say, the percentage of immigrants in a country increases, let's say, from ten percent to fifty percent, probably all the things might change. So I think you might look into that as well.
Yeah, thanks. So actually, the work where we're looking at the impact on the destination country. So I published that a couple of years ago. And so, and I haven't redone the analysis here. We actually, I looked at immigration from all countries. And I did make a distinction between, you know, where they came from, either EU or non EU. And actually, I didn't see a different relationship. I think one of the things that was important is that, so life satisfaction is capturing a lot of factors that are not always immediately in front of your mind. So, you know, in the migration can reduce the cost of production. And that's going to affect you. And you didn't realize it was because of migration. So a lot of times what people are thinking about are, let's say, the more salient negative channels, especially as popularized by media, let's say. But there may be other positive things, like you can go and get new goods on the street corner coming from a migrant family that, and you wouldn't have had that. So we have diversity of goods, as an example, diversity of views, lower cost of production. And those are things that people aren't really thinking about. And so life satisfaction brings all that in together. And so I think that, yeah, there's a distinction between perceptions and reality and also focus, you know, what you focus on. So it seems to be the case that, yeah, the relationship, even if you were to find a significant one, it wouldn't be very large in magnitude, especially if you have a give a people a period of time to adjust. Yeah, I don't know if I have time.
Time, so we will move on to the next.
Thank you, I can talk to you.
Yep, so Kelsey already kindly introduced our book chapter on happiness and migration. And I have the challenging task to tell you all about it in fifteen minutes. So here we go. So some people consider migration as one of the most simple recipes to increase happiness of people, especially the migrants themselves. And this is based on this simple figure of happiness around the world. Because there are huge differences in happiness between regions in the world, but also within countries. There are big differences in terms of happiness based on the locations where people live. But let's see if it's that easy, but at least we can say that it's a fairly popular recipe. Because the number of international migrants, so those who are foreign born, is still growing at a fast rate. At this moment, about three and a half percent of the world population is foreign born. And this number of, well, let's say, at this moment, it's almost three hundred million, will grow to four hundred million by two thousand and fifty. But even way more people say they would like to emigrate if having the opportunity. So fifteen percent of the world citizens would like to migrate to another country. And often, they don't actually migrate because they don't have the opportunities, for example, of because of admission policies of the intended destination countries. But in total, this would be more than a billion people. And if we look at internal migrants, these figures are even much bigger. For example, only in China already, in two thousand and thirteen, there were two hundred forty five million rural urban migrants, which is more than the total global number of international migrants. And these migrants, they move mostly for well being reasons. Only one to two percent moves for survival reasons, war, famine, natural disasters, et cetera. But more than ninety five percent moves to improve their own lives and their families. And in this book chapter, we were interested in two main questions. Does happiness affect migration and does migration affect happiness? So we're interested in the by causal relationship. And we reviewed all the empirical evidence available from a global perspective. And we took various stakeholders into account, migrants, hosting communities, and family members left behind. And we focused both on international and internal migration. So I'm now going to share all the conclusions of this literature up to date. When we first focus on this first question, so does happiness affect migration? We clearly see a big literature on how happiness levels of prospective migrants influence the intentions and desires to migrate. And we see a negative effect. So unhappy people are more willing to migrate. And we also see for migrants that they're more likely to return to their origin countries when they are less happy. And these effect sizes are quite sizable. So for example, for Europe, a prospective migrant scores half a point lower on this zero to ten country ladder of life than someone who has no intention to migrate. In Latin America, this, for example, zero point two points. And importantly, this pattern holds after accounting for standard migration predictors. For example, whether you have already a family member living in the intended destination country. And what's really interesting about this literature is this consistent finding that the prospective migrants tend to be unhappier, but they have higher objective success. They tend to be well being unhappier, they are also wealthier, better educated, et cetera. So this means that, yeah, well, one explanation is that unhappy people, they can gain the most from migration, the most happiness from migration. But the wealthier and better educated people have more opportunity to migrate because they are more likely to be admitted by intended destination countries. They have more means to migrate because migration is costly in the short term. So there's a, yeah, that's a really interesting contradiction. And we find this pattern for high income countries and for middle income countries, also like the countries that Kelsey mostly focused on. But in low income countries, the pattern is a bit different. There you see that the unhappier people desire migration more, but they intend it less. And again, this is because of these admission policies, they don't have the financial means. So actually, while definitely not a happiness drain is going on in middle and high income countries, in low income countries, there might be a happiness drain of like happier people moving out. And there was also some initial evidence that this was for internal migrants. When we look at aggregate happiness levels, so now we move from the personal level to the societal level, we generally see what you probably expect. So people tend to move towards happier destination places. They move away from less happy origin places. And when we look at return migration in literature, we see the same. So people who, the migrants who live in happier destination places, they are less likely to return to their origins. But when the happiness level in the origin place increases, they are more likely to return to that origin. And when we look at the relative importance of these happiness levels, and I think that's also something that Casper asked about, we see that these happiness levels are less important than some standard prediction, predictors of migration. For example, whether two countries have colonial ties, the same language, whether they share borders. But at the same time, the literature shows that these happiness levels have more predictive power than objective well being indicators such as economic indicators. So these happiness dynamics, they capture important quality of life related reasons for migration that are not captured by these traditional migration models that focus on objective well being. But even more relevant would be to look at happiness expectations, like more in line with a utility framework. And this has only been done by one study, and this is a major research gap in the literature. And this one study showed that evaluative subjective well being expectations, so whether you expect to become more satisfied with life after migration, was the best, though an imperfect predictor of the chosen residencies of US medical students. So these students needed to choose a location to study. And they didn't choose the place with the best future career prospects, not with the most desirable location, but really what they thought would be optimal in terms of their future life satisfaction. So I think if you want to work on this topic, this is a great, like, yeah, if you have data or see an opportunity, really work on this. Then we move to the second question, does migration affect happiness? And this might not be so easy as I just showed in this kind of, this country difference in happiness. Because immigrants and natives differ in all kinds of aspects. For example, their stable characteristics, natives and immigrants might differ in their genetics that influence happiness, the way they are nurtured, et cetera. But also their objective circumstances differ. Migrants might enter in the destination country in a, with a different labor market position than natives. And they need to rebuild their social networks. And then there's another issue for them. Their happiness functions are not the same as happiness functions as natives because they face additional determinants such as ethnic discrimination, integration requirements, language problems, et cetera. And then there's this person location fit. Like the immigrants might not fit as well in the destination as natives, for example, because of different religion, culture, language, et cetera. So it's not, it's not so easy. And there are major challenges for migrants in making migration decisions. Often, they have limited knowledge about the destination and they receive biased information from, for example, personal contacts who already live in the intended destination country because they try to present themselves in a positive way and their choices. And it's generally hard to correctly weigh advantage and disadvantages because of focusing illusions. So that's why in a World Happiness Report chapter, we use Gallup data on a global level to calculate for migrants by comparing them to match stayers, how their happiness develops because of migration. And what we found was that, as Kelsey already showed you, that when we look at the purple bars, an average migrant gains zero point five on the zero to ten country of law their scale in terms of happiness. So this is a very substantial increase. When we look at these other two purple bars, that's positive effect and negative effect. And what we see is that positive effect indeed increases as well, while negative effect decreases, which is a good thing. We want negative effect to decrease. So all three indicators show that migrants are much better off after migration. And then we split them into newcomers, those who arrived less than five years ago, and long-timers, those who arrived more than five years ago. And the bars are very equal, meaning that the full happiness gain for migration is already achieved in the first five years after migration. And this might be quite surprising to many people because objectively migrants improve their lives over time in the destination country because they build their careers, they rebuild their social networks, which all takes years to do. So objectively, we see after those five years, still great progress. But subjectively, we don't see that. And one of the reasons is that the reference points of the migrants shift. At first, they compare themselves mostly to people back home in their home country. And they're now better off when they move to more developed countries often than they were before migration. So they are doing better than the reference group. But over time, and when they integrate more into the host society, the reference points shift towards the natives in the host society, who are typically better off than these migrants. And then what we see because of these adaptation mechanisms that with all kinds of different indicators, the migrants tend to be less satisfied. Here, for example, I showed the perceptions of the host society. First, you see a huge peak, much higher than the perceptions of natives about the host society, but then it declines over time. And of course, there are differences between different migrant groups. For example, from Sub-Saharan Africa to Western Europe, we see a huge gain, almost 30% gain in life evaluations, but we don't see gains, for example, for Western Europeans moving to Central and Eastern Europe. So, and this is also in the broader literature, all kinds of studies are this, show the same result, that not every migrant is better off after migration. And when we compare the average happiness gain of migrants to the happiness gap between the destination and origin country, we actually see that it's very highly correlated. So moving to happier countries generally really improves people's happiness. And this correlation in terms of this average happiness gain of the migrant is stronger than, for example, for the wealth gap between the host and home country. So moving to a wealthier country tends to be less effective than moving to a happier country. And for internal migration, we see similar, well, we see a mixed pattern. But generally, these effects are much smaller because the circumstances change less. We generally see positive effects for internal migrants in developed countries, but negative effects in developing countries. Moving to the family members left behind, which is a very important group because millions of migrants move to another country while leaving their families behind, and often with the goal to support fire emittances, the well-being of their families back home. And there we generally see that also these families back home are better off after migration in terms of life health evaluations, also in terms of positive effect, but not in terms of negative effect. Actually, they experience more negative effects. So that's, for example, sadness, anger, anxiety. So here we see more of a mixed picture. And when we specifically focus on these individuals receiving rheumatosis, we still don't see that they're, they experience less negative effect. But what we do see is that these gains are larger for migrants moving from developing to developed countries. But in any of the 21 considered migration flows, we didn't see any reduced negative effect. So this is very consistent. Well, this is the picture Kelsey showed you. So we're now moving quickly to those people in the host country, how they are influenced by migration. And the literature likes, there's been several studies on this. In Europe, we generally see no effect, which Kelsey showed in an excellent paper. In the UK, we tend to see no or a negative effect, but it depends a bit on the subgroups. So the subgroups who also voted for Brexit are the ones who are negatively affected by the immigrants, so the poor people, the low-educated and unemployed ones and the older ones. In Germany, the literature shows no or a positive effect. And in US and Australia, we do see a negative effect. But the important thing here is that all these magnitudes are really, really small. They are so small that the practical importance is almost non-existent. So my conclusions from this chapter are that the migrants, they they typically migrate when they are less happy. They migrate when happiness in their host countries is higher and when happiness in their home countries is lower. And the effects, we see that migration has generally has a positive effect on migrants, a null effect on the host community because the magnitudes are so small, a unknown effect on the home community. So I'm very happy with Kelsey's research, which addresses this research gap. And the family left behind, it's a bit of a mixed impact, depending on whether you look at life evaluations or effects. So finally, some policy implications. So international migration is a powerful instrument to improve people's lives. And internal migration can also be, but a bit less powerful. But not all migrants become better off after migration. So they might need some help with setting realistic expectations. And the concerns in immigrant-receiving countries about migration are not in line with the negligible effects of immigration on societal happiness. And finally, policymakers who want to reduce out-migration, such as the Lithuanian woman Kelsey spoke about, should not target only the objective well-being of citizens, but also their subjective well-being so that they won't be inclined to move out of the country. So thank you, and we move on to the discussion from Kelsey.
Thank you. So it's really hard to follow that because I'm learning a lot about migration, almost everything from Mark Tyn and Mark Time. So this chapter, as Casper pointed out, is a very good one. It's a great place to start, also some of the earlier work. So basically, what I did is I put together some ideas about some things that we could do in the future. And then there's something from the economic literature, meaning more objective outcomes, like economic factors, like income, that are relevant, which I'll come to in a second. So that you saw, and just as a reminder, you know, there, migration impacts people through lots of ways, right? And so it's important to think not just about the natives, but about the people who are left behind, the migrants themselves. And so what I'm thinking about now is personality. And so if we could bring that into it. I'm a migrant now in Luxembourg, and Luxembourg is, you know, more than 50% or about that in the, in the country as a whole. And we just have this perception that they differ and that, and then, you know, once you reach a certain percentage of the population, maybe they also have an impact on the natives. So I'm curious about, you know, hope for the individuals who are moving and then openness to new experience. And those are those who choose to move, but then also maybe again that they might have an impact, say openness to new experience through bridging theory, sorry, exposure theory and bridging social capital on those who are local. You know, and then another one is delayed life stages. So do these migrants have delayed life stages? So get married later, do they have kids later? So there's just some other characteristics I think that'd just be interesting for us to know about. And characteristics of those migrants. And this exposure theory I mentioned, so exposure to immigrants, especially those of different ethnic, cultural, religious backgrounds, may affect the perceptions of immigrants. The background affecting perception of immigrants and diversity. And by extension, also the political views and behavior. So what I mean here is that are the natives themselves being changed by interacting with migrants? And also, how much time might that take? So the question that Casper raised about Brexit, right? So if you have too many migrants moving in too quickly, maybe the cities, the country's not able to adapt fast enough. But alternatively, right, maybe it's in a process that is more controlled, there's better assimilation. And then what's the impact on the natives, their own personality, their own openness to new experience? Is it affecting political views, behavior? So that you might have a shift in, say, voting for conservative parties or left or right, you know, this sort of thing. So I'm thinking about that impact. And I'd be curious to know more. The other thing is who's moving and when and how. So my understanding is it used to be more young men were moving. And then it shifted over time with more family reunification. So telling us, you know, about some of the characteristics of who's moving, I think would also be quite interesting. So just, and maybe I'm going to get that from a different literature, not the subjective being literature per se, but the broader literature on, you know, who's moving and when. And that might also, of course, impact the types of relationships that we find. What's perhaps most interesting, and this has broader impacts, I would say generally, I mentioned this sort of economic studies. So this is a Journal of Economic Perspectives paper from 2016. And they're trying to reconcile two different camps in the field. So there's George Borjas, who kind of famously says that immigration has a negative impact in the United States. And there's like David Card as an example on the other side, who they've looked at the exact same event. So you have exogenous variation, influence the number of immigrants in an area, and they find different results. And what they're doing is they're using different processes to analyze the underlying flows and outcomes. So one approach is to look at, refer to as a spatial approach, what Dussman at all referred to as the spatial approach. So it estimates the total impacts of regional immigration inflows in an area. All right, so we think of, let's say, the United States as a whole, Florida as a whole, or maybe a city as a whole. Alternatively, you can look at a skill-based approach, which estimates the relative impacts of natives, of different skilled groups. What the challenge here is, it's not so obvious. See if I wrote this down here. Yes, I did. Okay. So the first process allows for positive spillovers, right? So the number of immigrants in your region can influence the cost of production or the types of goods and services available to you. And so those can have some of the positive channels through which immigrants can affect natives. And it's not necessarily something you observe, as I was mentioning earlier. Whereas if you look at the skill-based approach, it actually focuses specifically just on those people who are typically competing with them. And it shuts down those channels, those positive, the spillover-type channels. So it's actually, generally speaking, when we do a, it was a nice example. I wrote a paper a few years ago and I looked at a micro-study of the impact of being unemployed for an individual, right? But then you can't just scale that relationship up to the country as a whole. Right? And so sometimes we make this mistake. So the, and this is a classic example. There's differences between the general equilibrium effects and the effects on individuals. So I, I think this raises a question. It's all right, so when we are analyzing the impacts on natives, are we allowing for societal-wide influences? And such as in this more regional approach? Or are you capturing only the direct relationship on the micro, on the individual? So this is, hopefully, that's coming across clearly. And so I think that's one of the reasons why you're going to get different results in different studies. And why we also, yeah, so we need to look at the, keep the context in mind, and then also the time period. So I imagine that it takes a period of time in which we need to adapt. And so let me say it another way, right? So we look at a causal analysis, exogenous variation, and we have a subgroup, right? And that happens in just a year's time, yes, you don't need to see it. That in life satisfaction research may not last, and it may not scale. Right? So this is a clear example of where that's the case. And so it's something to keep in mind for all of us, and definitely in this literature. So assimilation, integration of immigrants, and adaptation and general equilibrium effect. So I think it's something that's worth thinking about when talking about this literature. And I thought everybody else might be interested in the paper as well. So basically, just some ideas, and of course, we'll continue talking about this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. We have time for one or two questions. But maybe, Kelsey, you want to? Difficult to roll through.
Any questions? Chris?
Well, I hoped I wouldn't be first because this is actually more for Kelsey than Mark Tyn. A quick comment, Carol Graham's not here, I think she might be arriving tomorrow. I can't speak for her, but channeling her, hope might not be a personality trait, but another outcome, subjective outcome that we could care a lot about. That's the end of the comment, actually.
Yeah, I think that optimism being the trait, and of course, our expert on hope is here. And so I do think it's an important thing. So there may be the optimism of the individual as, let's say, the trait, the, in the selection into taking the risk. And then you can also think about it influencing outcomes as well. And yeah, so I think that's one of the areas of research that would be fun. And you've got a migration and a hope expert in the same office, so maybe they'll do that. Other questions?
I wonder whether, with the kind of data that you have on life satisfaction or happiness, whether it's broken down by domain satisfaction. Because in terms of policy reforms, that seems to me, it would be extremely important and extremely informative to know exactly whether they're happy or unhappy, in what domain, for what reason, that kind of thing. Is there such a thing in terms of domain satisfaction data?
That's a good question. Typically, well, we could definitely study it. And of course, the expected effects will be that economic satisfaction will be really high, but social satisfaction very low for migrants because they have to leave basically their social network behind. Yeah, but that will be very interesting to dive deeper into as possible. Okay, then we, well, I think, yeah, we ran out of time for this one, but we can, or we can talk later. So now I would like to invite Casper on stage.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to the organizers and thanks to Mark Tyn for these special sessions. It's great to be here. I should start by disappointing you, and this is entirely my error, because it says in the program that I would be talking about differences in the length and quality of life, but it turns out I'm actually talking about income inequality and the welfare effects of that. I hope that's okay. If not, I'm not angry if you now leave. Okay, so, so what's the thought of the paper? So in classic work, sort of in classic economic work, it's well-known and sort of understood that income inequality will just reduce average well-being, or welfare as they call it, just merely via the curvature of the relationship between income and well-being, or what you might call utility, right? But that's never been estimated in that, in that sort of shape. And I tried to estimate, estimate the size of this particular effect. And what I find is that essentially, income inequality in Europe reduces well-being, depending on how you do the estimation, by somewhere between 0.1 and 0.15 points on a 0 to 10 scale. And in monetary terms, so that sounds not too large, but in monetary terms, that means it's actually a loss that's roughly equivalent to foregoing about 30% of disposable household incomes. So in those terms, it's a huge effect that's caused by immigration. So in those terms, it's a huge effect that's caused by income inequality. Okay, so, so why, why would I want to study this and why might you be interested in this? So the first thing to say, I guess, is that, you know, inequality, and we've seen this in Chris's slides, when looking at the economics literature, inequality came above even incomes. And so it's not only in the academic literature, like economics, but also in the, in the public debate. I mean, we had the, the sort of discourse around the top 1%, we had Piketty's Capital in the 21st century. So inequality is just a key topic in, in public discourse. And there's, there's several reasons why we might be interested in inequality. So one first initial reason is, is just to think about justice, and that it would be unjust, at least in some instances, for in an income inequality to exist. But we might also think that it harms growth, or that it harms in some way political institutions and democracy more broadly conceived. But that's not what I'm interested in, in this particular case. I'm only interested in sort of the visceral reason that I think income inequality might well reduce welfare. Welfare here understood as subjective well-being. Okay, and one way of sort of making the point, in the most simplest term, is just to have a, a plot where on the y-axis is average life satisfaction, on the x-axis is the Gini coefficient. And we, we see a pretty clear negative association between the two, implying that income inequality seems to be associated with less life satisfaction. But of course, that's just a binary plot. We don't know what drives this. I mean, maybe it's just aspects of particular countries. We here see the countries that, at least in Europe, tend to be more unequal, tend to be also poorer countries, tend to be countries from Eastern Europe. So there's all these reasons why we might not, you know, take, take a graph like this at face value. And as a, as a sort of final point of, of background, there's sort of these, these two literatures that I'm trying to speak to. The first one is this older inequality literature, which was sort of focusing on deriving inequality indices in, in sort of a principled manner, where you, you know, you postulate a social welfare function, and then, and then you look at, given this social welfare function, given some level of inequality aversion, we can derive then an inequality index. And that's, it's an old literature dating back more than 100 years ago. And then there's this, this newer well-being literature that has been much more focused on just essentially regressing macro-level measures of inequality on, on measures of subjective well-being. For example, Jan Delhaize and Dragulov's paper in ESR, Martin Schröder's paper, I think also in ESR, and, and Schneider's paper in Journal of Happiness Studies, or maybe this one is even also in European Sociological Review. They've all been doing sort of this, this type of thing where you regress a, a macro-level inequality measure on individual-level subjective well-being, and then see whether you can find some effect there. And there's loads of other studies in that sort of general style. But what I think is sort of a severe problem with that is that you don't have all that many countries, right? Especially when you're just looking at, at Europe. So then you have this problem that, you know, regressions of individual outcomes on these macro characteristics are known to be fairly unstable. And it's fairly unclear whether we can infer real causality from these associations. And the kinds of mechanisms that are typically postulated there are kind of ad hoc, they're hard to test. So often it's sort of talked about that, you know, more unequal countries would, would sort of induce feelings of social deprivation or sort of a status anxiety. But it's, it's not fully clear how this really is going to work on the individual level. And the third reason why I'm maybe a little bit skeptical with that particular literature is that the, the reviews that exist of them, and in particular, the systematic reviews, show sort of a mixed and contradictory findings that are kind of hard to explain. So sometimes you see a positive effect, sometimes you see a negative effect, sometimes you see a zero effect from inequality. And so it's sort of entirely unclear what we should be taking away from that literature. And so I, I'm looking only at the, at the most simple case. All I'm looking at is, is the simple idea that, okay, if you have a concave relationship between welfare and income, then an equal distribution of incomes should just maximize welfare, just to, to sort of illustrate the point, right? If I'm, if I'm at the very top here, and I get a large reduction in my income that could then be redistributed, I'm not going to lose all that much of my, of my well-being. But if I'm, you know, getting a fairly small increase in my, in my income towards the bottom, I'm actually going to get a fairly large increase in my well-being. So, so the optimum would be to distribute incomes equally. And the question is just, okay, given some curvature of, of this, of this function, what's, what's actually the effect of, on well-being? And that's the idea. So I'm going to estimate sort of three quantities. The first one is just the well-being loss. And that's the idea, okay, what would total well-being or average well-being be under an equal distribution of incomes compared to the actual observed distribution of incomes? So that's the well-being loss. But I can also look at the sort of shadow cost of inequality. And I can ask essentially, how much larger would incomes have to be, such that we get the same welfare level that we could obtain under an equal distribution of incomes? And I can express this sort of in relative terms, sort of how, how, how many percent more of, of incomes should each of us get in order to get the same welfare level? Or in absolute terms, which is just the, the average euro amount in that particular case that's needed to, to get at the same welfare level as under equality. Okay, so how am I doing this? Essentially, what I do is I just very flexibly estimate this function that relates incomes to well-being. And then on the basis of that estimate, which is based on, on a large individual-level sample, I can then estimate this, this shadow cost of inequality C and, and the well-being loss, delta W. And I can also show sort of an effect from individual countries or an effect across countries. And so what's the advantage of this? Well, the first one is that I can give a country-specific estimate. And the second one is I have a clear mechanism. The mechanism is just a curvature. I don't look at relative effects, I don't look at sort of a generalized income inequality aversion, or sort of, of, of those sorts of things. And I can sort of compute counterfactuals. For example, for 20% higher income tax, say, what would be the welfare effect? Okay, so the data I'm using here is, is from the European Statistics on Income and Living Conditions, where in 2013 and 2018, they asked about people's life satisfaction, their happiness, and also feelings of depression. But I'm only going to here show results on life satisfaction. And the neat thing about the dataset is that it actually serves as the official source of data for inequality estimates in Europe. So it maps neatly onto my, my more general goal. So I've got a fairly large sample across all EU members plus a bunch of others, including the UK. Okay, and then I have these three ways of estimating the dysfunction relating incomes to well-being. The first one, you will, I'm sure, all recognize, which is just to assume the natural logarithm, which is just assuming a curvature, I'm not estimating it here. And then the second one, there's different ways of naming it. Let's call it the isoelastic specification or constant relative risk aversion, which essentially is a generalized version of the log, where for this parameter rho that you see there, if you were to plug in and take the limit as rho goes to, goes to 1, you, you would see that it's actually the log. So it's just a generalized version of that. Or I could just use splines. So, so essentially, very flexibly estimate this, this curvature by just, you know, taking like polynomials over sort of short bits of the, of the income distribution. And I do all three. And so when I do this, I get this picture. And a couple of things to take away from the picture. So the, the yellow dots that you see here are just dummies for each percentile of the income distribution. And that's sort of the most flexible way of estimating the curvature. And essentially, what you see is that above, let's say roughly 40K, you no longer see any increases in life satisfaction as incomes go up. And that's also reflected in, in the specification using splines, which pretty much closely follow the dummies, as you would expect, given how flexible it is. However, the, the isoelastic specification or the log specification, where the log really just makes an assumption, indicate that incomes would be continued, or that life satisfaction would continue to increase with higher incomes. But that just simply doesn't seem to be borne out from the data. And maybe that's something we should just more generally take away when estimating these kinds of regressions. And so, so what you saw there is for pooling across Europe. But when I do this for individual countries, one thing that I found remarkable is that essentially this association, bar some wrinkles, is always pretty much the same. After 40K, nothing much is, is happening anymore. So it's, it's a fairly sort of constant or common function across countries. Okay, so that's the, the set of first takeaways. There's a clear curvature, so that means there will definitely be a loss from inequality. It seems that the log and the isoelastic specification just assume greater increases in well-being, which means that they, they would indicate a downward bias in the effect of inequality. And finally, contrary to, to sort of well-known studies, I mean, most of you will, will know the PNAS paper by Kahneman and Deaton, where they say, okay, above 70K, you continue to get more satisfied. I don't find this in European data. But I also don't find these sorts of turning points where suddenly life satisfaction would decline as incomes grow, as was found in a fairly well-known paper in Nature Human Behavior. Okay, so here's my first set of, of results on the cost of inequality, now expressed in, in terms of, of monetary values. And essentially, what you see is each of the European countries ordered by their average income level, that's in white, and then how much richer they would have to be, such that they could get the, the same welfare level as they would get under equality. And essentially, what you see, all of them have a fairly large welfare loss, except for one of the rich countries, and that's Iceland. So Iceland has a remarkably equally distributed income distribution, and what they have is fairly small gains from each additional dollar, and Euro. And because they are already fairly rich, actually, any redistribution doesn't do anything anymore, because they're, they're already so far up. So I thought that, that was interesting, that they're fairly equal and, and don't, don't get much gains from, from redistribution. But for example, a country like Luxembourg, I know there's some people from Luxembourg here, you guys could really, really benefit from some more equality. Like, it, it would be really nice to get this, this part, you know, a bit up. Okay, so just to put this in tabular form, sort of across all of Europe, essentially, what, what I estimate then is that it's roughly equivalent to 30% of disposable household incomes. It sort of depends a little bit on how you do it. I think the country-specific splines, so we, where you estimate for each individual countries is sort of the best specification, but you know, we can always debate that. The important point though is that it doesn't vary too much, you know, it's not crazy variation here. And that's roughly equivalent to somewhere between 6,000 and 7,000 euros per capita that we're essentially losing because we have income inequality. And we can sort of decompose this into a within-country component. So just what would happen if within each country where we had income equality, and then we are losing roughly 5K? And then into a component where we would sort of make countries across countries, make them equal in their mean incomes, and that effect is somewhat lower. It's roughly at the order of 2,000 euros. Okay, I roughly said that now. How much time do I have left? None. Okay. So you can do the same thing, as I said, with, with well-being. And then what you get is essentially with the, with the blue dots, sort of a within-country component of how much, how much more satisfied could countries be under an equal distribution of incomes? That's always sort of around point one of a point. But if you redistribute it across Europe, of course, you would get these massive gains towards the less satisfied countries, which tend to be poorer, and only fairly limited losses towards the, towards the top of the distribution. So what that really means is that a, a reduction in income inequality would, would indicate both, both an increase in mean life satisfaction, but also a massive reduction in the inequality in, in life satisfaction. And you know, at least for some ethical theories, we might find that valuable. I mean, if you're a prioritarian, you, you should like that, I guess. I will skip over this, but I will just say this. So you might think, oh, these effects are really small. For example, the coefficient on unemployment, you know, you, you might recognize the sort of numbers, it's roughly 0.5. But very few people are actually unemployed. So if you, if you just wanted to eradicate unemployment, you actually would get a much, much smaller effect from eradicating unemployment than you would get from eradicating income inequality. So that's, that's just my counterargument against, against that thought. Okay, so let me conclude here. First point, the curvature of this income-well-being association just implies a direct loss from inequality, and I think we would do well to estimate this sort of quite often. And that's roughly equivalent to 30% of disposable household incomes, which is in turn equivalent to roughly 6.5,000 euros per capita. In well-being terms, when you just look at it in absolute terms, it's small. But if you set it in comparison to sort of other variables that are less prevalent, it actually turns out to be reasonably large. So it depends on how you interpret this, this, this effect. That's all I have for now.
Yeah, so I happen to be Casper's discussant. So here we go. Yeah, I really like the article, it really gives a new perspective. So it's important for me to make my next point to first repeat Casper in saying that he starts from a simple intuitive model about the... Well, we don't see anything anymore. I see it here. Maybe, can I be put back? Well, I will just continue talking in the meantime. So it's a very simple intuitive model about marginally declining utility of income. And as he mentioned in his model, he wants to show the well-being or the shadow cost of deviating from full equality, which is basically a genie of zero. Satiris paribus, and that, that's very important for my comments. Because this, it's interesting to look at these costs for this specific channel. But there are other things at play that might alleviate the cost of inequality. Well, we still don't see. So my main point is that this satiris paribus condition does not hold. Full income equality has negative externalities, such as lower productivity. For example, you have tournament theory in, in the management literature showing that bigger wage gaps between layers in organizations improves productivity. And I, I realize, of course, that Casper knows that as well. So what he basically does is he calculates the cost side of greater inequality while purposefully neglecting the sizable gain side of inequality, implying that he's not calculating the total effect. And that's also his attention, he doesn't intend to calculate the total effect. But when I was reading through the paper and through his preliminary slides, in his framing, he sometimes suggests to calculate the total effect rather than only the cost side. For example, I came across quotes like "inequality reduces welfare", or "the welfare loss caused by the curvature of the income-to-welfare relationship may be interpreted as a lower bound for the total effect." But actually, it's not a lower bound, it might more be an upper bound if we take these positive externalities of inequality into account. So I think it's an upper bound instead of a lower bound, probably. And also, Casper, also in his presentation, points out that his design has various advantages compared to macro-level studies that are typically done. But it should also be acknowledged then that his scope is more limited in terms of he cannot calculate the total effects. In contradiction to these macro-level studies, he can only zoom in on one of the main channels for that. And then there were two other issues that I want to discuss. The first one, and I'm not very familiar with, I'm not very familiar with this dataset. But these are self-reported income data, right? And I realize that this is, this is used as official statistics as well. And I realize that this is used as official statistics as well. But I, and I'm not an expert in income data, but I always wonder how reliable self-reported income data are. For example, I work in one project with objective income data that can be pulled, at least on a national level, for the Netherlands just from the Dutch register. So you can have objective income data. So maybe well either at least address this point by showing it, or like, yeah, informing the reader that the literature shows that they are quite reliable, or you could do a robustness check. For example, when you use panel estimates for Germany or so with these official registered data. And my second point is that I know that these OLS and panel estimates of the income-subjective well-being relationship substantially deviate normally in the literature. I'm not sure whether the curvature also deviates, because that's very important here. But Casper uses cross-sectional data and basically, well, his reasoning, which is a valid reasoning, is to maximize the external validity of his estimates. But given these large deviations, it might be more convincing to have in the main analysis a stronger focus on this internal validity using, for example, national panel estimates. So personally, I would maybe switch it around if you find that these estimates quite deviate quite a lot, yeah. And then now we can open the floor for a general discussion. So if you have any question for Casper, please raise your hand. Casper?
You can come out the stage again. Yeah.
While you're moving up there. You estimated this relationship assuming that it's just an absolute gain, right? You're talking about a direct relationship between income and life satisfaction without accounting for the relative income effects, right? And so you could scale up and scale down. And then if there's no relative income anymore, that obviously that value would go to zero. So I think there's an extra dimension there. And you must have, you left it out on purpose. But maybe you can tell us more about that. And I think...
It's true, I did this on purpose. Suppose relative incomes depended, or your well-being also depended on the mean, or let's say on the log of the mean of your reference group. In that case, relative income effects have zero effect via income inequality. Because it just depends on the mean or transformation of the mean. But the mean doesn't depend on inequality. So in that case, actually, relative income effects have zero effect via inequality. Now, of course, you might think that they are, for example, asymmetric effects, right? And in that case, under some circumstances, the effect will be positive. And in other circumstances, will be negative. Now, the problem is that it really tightly depends on exactly how you specify this functional form. And as soon as you get it slightly wrong, you get a different sign. If you just estimate it just incorrectly, you can get a massive, massive change in the total effect. And it also strongly depends on who your reference group is. Because then you have this distinction between between-group inequality and within-group inequality. And those will sort of work in complicated ways. So I consciously decided, okay, with the data that we all have available, it's impossible to make these estimates credible. And so I decided, okay, I would say something about this in the paper, but will refrain from doing the estimates because I just cannot make them credible. That's just maybe...
Okay. Thanks, Casper, for the presentation. Maybe an helpful question as you labeled them before. I'm just trying to think about the framework, you know, like you were talking. Here, your framework is utility is concave, and I'm following you 100%. But ultimately, if the point is to think about redistribution, then we're talking about taking money to people to give it to some other people. So I'm just wondering whether actually the prospect theory would be more the framework for which you want to do your analysis. And at the end of the day, is it something you already have in mind or is it already covered somewhat?
No, it's not. So what I did do was have some panel estimations, and they were sort of remarkably in line with the cross-sectional estimates. So that actually answers one of my points. That it's true that, you know, the coefficient, when you take the log and you do a panel fixed effects regression, you know, the coefficient is roughly half compared to the cross-sectional estimate. But the curvature turns out to be roughly the same. So this rho parameter, for example, just turns out to be the same. But what I didn't do is look at sort of short-run asymmetries. Now, the problem is that if you're assuming a long-run asymmetry, and you would have to assume a long-run asymmetry to make this useful for this type of analysis, then you run into all kinds of problems where, you know, two individuals that for an infinite period of time have the same income level but got there via different paths will for an infinite period of time have different welfare levels. And that's just not credible. So it seems like long-run loss aversion can't be a real thing. So now, but I'm confused about whether to say this or to estimate this or what to do about it. So it's helpful that you're saying it, but I'm still unsure, you know, what to do.
Hi, Casper. Thanks for that. I have sort of a jumble of questions. And maybe one of them, or the last one, is sort of what is the motivation for the work? You said you want to do something on the subject, but you realize that there are going to be very different consequences depending on how you think income relates to people's well-being. When you do work like this, though, it brings the focus on income and these, you know, kind of simple measures of inequality. So let me try and say something more constructive. And one, I think it's really good to, maybe this is what Anthony said, but to have a policy in mind when we think of a measure, before we even think of a measure of inequality. I think there are different reasons why we redistribute. And so, you know, the measures might be related to policy. And so then you have a sort of practical implication in mind at the beginning. Just as an example of how complicated these things get, I think. I don't know if you've seen, is it Hoppins or Hoppins and Konienko's work on... Who thought a lot about this kind of stuff. If people care about their rank in income, then a decreasing inequality can be really bad. Because you give people incentive, if people are overworking because they're in a reference income rat race, it's better to have them spread out, and then they don't overwork as much. So that's just an example of how the relative income... I mean, you said it depends a lot. That's an example of intuitively how the relative income effects can matter a lot. Yeah, maybe we'll leave it with that. I'd love to talk about it more with you. Thanks.
Do we have time for one reply? So one reply that I'm sort of working on, but it wasn't fully worked out just yet, so I didn't want to present it, was what you can do is instead of looking at, you know, complete equality, which is just completely mad, of course, we can't get to complete equality, as you rightly point out, right? I mean, that would just be massively costly. But what you can do is using this type of approach, sort of estimate a much more modest counterfactual. For example, the counterfactual, what happens if we just level the top 5%? We just say, okay, at the 95th percentile of the income distribution, we're just leveling incomes and just redistribute them efficiently towards the bottom. And what be the welfare effect of that? What you can show is that, or it turns out that the welfare effect from, let's say, having the top 5% leveled is that it's already half of the total possible welfare gain. So that's much more in line with sort of thinking about policy. What would it mean to sort of curb the incomes at the very top? Another one is to think, okay, suppose we had an additional income tax. What would be the welfare effect via this channel? And so that's estimable in this sort of framework. And that's sort of where I'm thinking of going to make it more relevant for policy. That's one thought. I don't know how good it is. Oh, that's too bad for everyone. Yeah. Yeah. So one alternative way of thinking about this is to take these estimates as sort of the bound for how much, how large our losses in terms of mean incomes can be for a given level of additional redistribution. So suppose the plan was, yeah, we are just going to level the top 5%, right? How much of a loss can we incur in order to make this worth our while? And maybe that's a better framing, to say, okay, how many of these rich people can now leave to, I don't know, wherever they leave to, Cayman Islands or something? Pardon? Yeah.
Okay, we ran out of time, unfortunately. Thank you all for attending.